Okay, welcome everybody to the town board work session of Tuesday, September tenth, two thousand nineteen. And let's see, first thing and on our agenda is Sam Grant's discussion.
So I had an opportunity to speak with Ike and the who relayed conversations with the rec commission and I will be sending a letter to Senator Harkman's office this week explaining that we would like to request funding for improvements at the middle of the field. This may include but it's not limited to resurfacing the tennis courts with asphalt, reskining the infield with baseball diamond, field bikes, new playground equipment, site work and engineering and lights in the parking lot.
Can I say something about that?
Sure.
Why do they want to re-surface it with asphalt?
That's what's there now and
But we don't wanna look in the Munchroom.
It's too much maintenance with the
They talk about the asphalt.
I think it was about forty thousand per, wasn't it? Just the cost was about there.
The hartrue, I don't recall what the cost was, but
Well, there definitely is more maintenance involved. You have to sweep them, you have to use and stuff.
Yeah, they were thinking
Not the hartrues ones, that's the clay ones.
Oh.
The hartrues, they're hard, but they're like a little softer. It's not the clay.
No, 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 I obviously we would never do
No.
Needs an irrigation system and everything else, I'm sure.
What do they have at Chesapeake?
Chesapeake is clay.
Oh, that's clay, okay.
That's remarkable.
What about like birch wood?
I don't know.
That's hartrue. It's hartrue, right? I don't know, can I just look in? It doesn't have to be in the letter, but
Right, we have what I can do with it.
Yeah, I just I'm just putting down resurfacing, we will get close on everything.
Yeah.
Okay, it's fine. Um, great.
Because that is one of the criticisms, we don't have any of those hartrue courts anymore.
We only have two tennis courts.
Yeah, I was gonna say, what about the hartrues?
Hartrues.
They're not, no, they don't, no, they
Really?
Really?
Sure, they're hartrues.
They're not. They're not.
Oh, here we go again.
Alright.
Take a look aside.
Wait, 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 last time who was right? Elton Green or Chesapeake?
We're gonna roll the dice. Doubler or nothing, guys.
My kids play there all the time.
Play defense.
Um, so the next thing on the agenda is the discussion of the snow removal RFPs.
Yes.
So
Lots of paperwork.
Oh, good. Um, so Bart actually went through the so on council Ed actually wrote a memo for us which I don't see here now.
It goes separate.
I know, but um
This is really crazy though.
There's
Well, what can it be?
That's because I only got it, yes, today or today.
Okay.
And so it was supposed to be part of the council of this. I will get it for you.
Want some candy?
No, not mine.
Okay.
Oh, nine o'clock at night.
So the question ended up being about a bid bond and a performance bond. So I did not include a bid bond and I asked for a seventy-five percent performance bond. I spoke to Jerry and Bart and Bob Cioli, I'm just concerned that we in that we may not get bidders for this. It is, you're asking, you know, basically landscapers who were during, who, you know, during the warm months are gonna do this, there is significant insurance requirements because we're a municipality. And so that was really my concern, they're not asking for a bid bond. I spoke with Jerry today and his rationale for including one was that it basically means that your low bidder can't walk away. They would lose their bid bond. So that's the guarantee, that a low bidder will actually stick around and accept the project and move on.
Are people more inclined to do that or they're less inclined to bid if there's a bid bond?
It does, it's only a ten percent, so it's not terrible.
But if they don't accept it and walk away
Then we keep the bid on next one?
Do we have a bond?
We, yes.
No, without the bond. We didn't have a bond.
Right.
But Do we really want to use someone who's gonna walk away, who we have to make sure they're gonna be here?
Or that's not, but it's a certain, when somebody has to put money upfront for the bond, it means that they have cash on hand, they tend to be a little bit more solvent than someone who's not in a position to even just part X amount of dollars for a little bit.
So if we include the bid bond, the downside is that you think it may limit the responding pool, the pool of responders.
I was concerned about it, but since it's only ten percent, I think it's okay.
Not with this one.
The original react, the original comments I received was a hundred percent bid bond, a hundred percent performance bond. And so the revised numbers would be a ten percent bid bond and a fifty percent performance bond.
And do they have a sense, Jerry or Bart, of how many potential lenders there are out there?
No.
Um, and if we have a performance bond, do we really need the bid bond?
You know, it's the other way around, if we have a bid bond, do we really need the if they're gonna walk away, they're gonna walk away. What happens is is that you replace bonds
The performance bond is to perform, I would think that's kind of more important. If they walk away, we don't really want them anyway.
Jerry, Jerry's preference was to have a bid bond over a performance bond, actually. So
And this is his mystery, he knows better than
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, Bart had a couple of comments in it, Ivy, I'd love to hear yours.
Um, that's the same thing I had in mind.
Ah, okay, so
That's actually all the same things I had in mind.
Oh, goodness, okay, great. So Bart's comments were that we should not put restrictions on the time.
Yeah. Yeah.
DPW works twenty-four hours, our contractors should be here as well.
Right. Right. Yeah.
As far as B on page nine, the documentation of the time removing snow from locations is only for the areas outside of the parking district, our downtown area, where we would be billing the homeowners for whatever work was done. Because it means that they would not have complied with our law that requires snow be removed within six hours every day of snow except this overnight hours.
Just on this piece, the language about we know requiring them to respond within one hour
Mm-hmm.
and phone messages within thirty minutes, that's within B,
Yep.
which talks about the hourly work for snow removal outside of the parking district potentially. So it just feels like that needs to, it's in the wrong place, is what I'm saying.
It's the city vote, yes. I'm sorry, so where is it? Within one hour.
Oh, weird, okay, I might you might have already figured that out, took it out. The version that I had from Friday, the contractor must respond, so we don't have to let it out.
Got it, but that's in D, so
It was in D. Oh, there it is.
Yeah, no, no, it's still there, yeah, yeah.
Yes, yeah, so just that sentence, the contractor
Okay. Mm-hmm.
Because it applies to both the
Right, this should, yeah, yes.
The sort of
Yeah, so actually, I'm happy to repeat it in both, but yeah.
Yeah. And then, just with regard to documenting the time that they spend,
Mm-hmm.
it it almost, I think we want a separate invoice for it, not just that we want to doc, want them to track the hours.
So we're gonna, we would invoice through us, so I need them just to take and document the times they are, then we're gonna take
Okay. You're gonna create the invoice, okay, alright.
Because what what happens is is that the way the legislation is written, we have an opportunity, if if the payment isn't made for us to take and then assess it to their tax bill.
Yeah. Great.
So we actually will keep track of all
It's great.
Um, ah, on page eleven, C, oh, do you have something before that?
Nope.
Okay. In the case of major snowstorm, snow accumulation, the contractor will provide an ongoing service during, I think it should be during and after. I had put after the storm, Bart had added during the storm, it probably should be during and after the storm.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Yes, it should.
Okay.
Right, because it starts to accumulate.
Yep.
They need to be here.
Um, and those were the changes. I actually prepared, asked Kelly, yeah, Lauren and Kelly, put together
Oh, great, oh, good.
The radius.
I would guess.
That's the good side, the bad side is is that according to council
Oh, it is too much.
You can't specify that?
You can't, yeah.
So that, so we've got the hour in there.
Um, yeah, you can't do it, so I'm sorry, this was a, it should be on your thing as well, this is mine.
Okay.
That's what I have.
It's a radius map of, yeah.
Oh, it is. I didn't notice that.
Although, to be fair, like, the radius may not be the best way to measure your responsiveness anyway, right?
Right.
Because like twenty miles south versus twenty miles north.
Or you have to do it in a new city, or west.
Sure.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Depending upon how you get it.
No, I think it's, I think it's by the way it's written.
And just by the every storm could be a different person, like, it could impact the south more than the north, and then that's the north.
Yeah, they just have to
Right, right, so good point.
So there's no
Well, we were trying to figure out how to do like a local reference, and we can't do that on public works projects that are going after competitive bidding.
Yes, yes.
We are limited to that for, uh, local, well, non, under thirty-five thousand dollars.
Yeah, I saw, I saw.
Okay.
The amount of that.
Okay, so you did, good, great.
Magnesium acetate was the, did we just double check to circle back to make sure that was an environmentally friendly product
Right.
and that it wasn't gonna harm the dog's paws and
None, none Even the ones that don't hurt the dog's paws are not, none of the stuff is environmentally great. Even sand gets into, the stormwater drains and clogs it and has to be removed. So none of it's wonderful. Salt is really awful and then it gets worse from there.
Yeah, salt's worse.
Because I said to Jerry, well, sand, and he's like, oh no, sand's terrible. Gets, you know, everything gets conked and
And this product can also be used on the bluestone?
No.
Oh, okay, so what gets used on bluestone?
What's important?
Uh, sand.
Oh. Is that in here?
So it should be the bluestone, bluestone.
Because I hate, oh, oh, here is, no, it's true, and other than sand, it's right there, yeah, I just missed it.
Because you can't
And that's all you can use, because bluestone gets really slippery, like, I use stuff on bluestone.
I'm That's supposed to
Really?
I do too. I do too.
Oh, we're not hiring you two.
But that's, you know, home versus
Bluestone's been there a long time. But, yeah.
Be there longer.
Not supposed to, so they're gonna have to
Because it gets really slippery, bluestone.
Does. So, yeah. We're gonna be challenged.
Why can't you, it just corrodes the bluestone?
It just, yeah.
Maybe it's
But sand
All of it, even the dog safe stuff corrodes the bluestone?
Yeah.
Really?
But the sand doesn't melt the ice like the other stuff does.
No, it doesn't.
So
It starts by traction.
It does, it gives you
Right, so all you're gonna do is build up ice though, potentially over
And what about that pre-treater stuff?
The brine is, is a salt, is a saltwater.
Yeah, the brine.
It's just the, it's diluted and it, it stays on the road and it doesn't bounce over to the coals, so it actually stays where it's supposed to.
Alright, what else?
Okay. Um, so, well, traffic consultant, but really it's a
Oh, I'm sorry, can you maybe just do a little check on that before we move off?
Oh, of course.
And then I, this is my absolute last comment, I promise.
Yeah.
I just thought it was a little bit ambiguous what you wanted them to do, which properties, where they're taking care of the, the, um, one seventeen and King Street.
Okay, so we're just gonna, I'm just gonna have to do, we have a better map. So we need a better map for the, um, the parking district, which is going to be the, every storm that they take care of. And then for the areas two, three and four, I'll just make sure that the, that the map is better, like, as I can
Yeah, this is, this is actually five, is this number. Uh, King Street and Bedford Road, so I just yeah, because I know the town has probably taken care of the area up there, so I'm pretty sure
What are you looking for?
Ask them.
All the time, right?
No. She didn't put it in this one. Yeah, I don't have the, um, the map in this one. Okay, it's fine, alright. I thought we got Peter.
This is the, again, this is the one from Friday, so
Yeah, yeah. That's okay, no, no, it's okay. So two, three, four.
Yeah, so it's like the little boxes, like, in the, in the higher section.
Yeah, it's too high, we, I thought we had discarded, because the, the RFP only deals with two, three and four. If you table it, so that is the one map, so we'll have to make sure that the right map is there. Um, yeah, see, only there's two, three, four.
Oh, yeah.
Two, three, four, on the attached map, so that's not the right map, okay. Okay, we'll make sure of that, sorry. Great. Um, sorry, traffic consultant, which is actually the request from Chief Carroll.
So, I thought when we were studying this whole downtown and traffic flow, that definitely came up, and I was pretty sure that DOT said they were too close together to put a traffic light at Woodburn
No, it was
and at the bottom of Brandon here.
I, I, I sort of remember that as well.
Yeah. Because you said, why wouldn't you put a traffic light there?
I'm pretty sure I sort of
Because that's not, yeah, that's not the
Called too close to the other one.
Right, but it's not DOT's call, because it's not their road.
No, I think they were talking about a traffic circle, there was the, the
That's the, that's the issue.
The thing was, it was a traffic, the thing was that if we had a traffic circle at, at the triangle, Was it a T?
like some people suggested, which we looked into, you couldn't have the traffic light by King Street and Starbucks, and then of course, then those people are like, oh, then we should have two traffic circles. But that was
Well, I thought it was
You can't have a traffic light so close to a traffic circle because it backs up.
It was with the lights. Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll check that, but I
Just look in the book at that.
I thought it was with the lights, not the circles.
But it's, it is far enough.
No, you
I mean, it is
First of all, this would want to be a light a couple hours a day, I mean, it wouldn't be a light all the time.
You're probably blinking yellow all the time.
Yes.
So it would be, it would be a light three hours a day instead of having a cop.
So it's, it's It's, right, so it's
Why not, why not have it all the time? I get stuck at that intersection at like eleven AM.
I guess, I guess that's a part of the
Wouldn't it be cars coming out of the, which, were you talking about coming out of Woodburn now?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, I'm coming out of the train station and I want to make a left to go back towards
Another transition. Mm-hmm. Yeah, the left's a hard one, yeah.
Well, you could, I guess you could have sensors in there so that it's, it just, it would stay green most of the time if there's a car coming at it.
Yeah.
It, it, it is what it is, I mean, they can figure that out, we don't have to
Yeah, 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 right.
Yeah.
But basically, I mean
That's important.
It is a drain on resources and we keep on losing people.
Right, you know, there's someone there.
Right. Right, so ideally, what he'd like to be able to do is, you know, have an officer like, actually, at the actual train station member, we used to have a, a, a person actually there when the trains let out, where
Mm-hmm.
That's a much better value.
Yeah, having somebody, that's really, really good.
Yeah.
And let the speed of traffic light, um, okay, so is he okay to proceed to ask it?
Yeah, would we have to rip up the street?
For traffic light? Do you have to put a pole in?
Um
Not necessary.
No, um, a pole, and I have to just investigate it.
Mark, do we have conduits over there that
So, okay, so they're, if, if we had our druthers, we wouldn't be using the, um, the the places in the, the, um, I want to say implants, but the, the embedded
Yeah.
traffic sensors, they have, they have cameras now.
I think that's number three.
Um, yeah, the, um, New York, New York State DOT doesn't approve cameras for their roads, but Jersey does and other areas with, you know, with its local traffic lights,
It do exist.
um, they have, they have cameras instead, and we would probably go with the camera, because it's, it's a, it's a better sensitivity
Okay.
than being impeded in the street, so that's, that would be my preference to go with that.
And even just putting the actual pole in?
Well, that, we'd have to figure out how we do that, it would be a corner, I just don't know which corner.
I'm sure it's movable with us.
And there are conduits run, so we could put it in, would that have to rip up the street?
It would be, so it would only be electrical, it would be electrical conduits.
Right.
Yeah, just at that corner, it would, it would definitely involve some sort of, um
Excavation.
Excavation of a corner, absolutely.
Okay.
I know.
It wouldn't be the first sidewalk dugout after the board.
Yeah, it's fine.
Alright, next.
So Sabrina circulated this letter from CCA today. Oh my god.
Because William won't see it, she'll go to
You have to wait two seconds, the letter's not in here.
We want the open poles, the double poles, open poles. I have a, I have a letter.
Isn't that in page three?
Yeah, page three.
Sorry, she just put the email
It's there.
She just put her email behind it, it's fine.
It's fine, yeah, it was.
Good, it, 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 okay, yeah. Um, so it's a letter requesting that the Public Service Commission make certain changes to make it easier for CCA to thrive in our local communities. Right now, there's a lot of redundant paperwork that's being sent to people that confuses them along the way.
Sorry, Mark, it's quite early.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry.
Right. It's the first
I know, we're just completely
It's been a long time until now.
God forbid we should ever be in the right time.
We're going to your statistics about thirty-eight minutes late.
It's gotta come for something.
Bringing down our average though.
Anyway, so, uh, you know
It's funny.
I know we polished it all, it's still twixt in here though, that's actually
It's not Halloween yet, I'm not understanding.
Anyway. So they're looking for our support.
To sign on to this letter.
Are we good with it?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay, then close.
Next, double poles, here we are, so
I told you guys that Verizon, the same.
So Nick has presented us with quite a lot of information. He gave us a couple of different local ordinances from other municipalities, Towne Thompson, who's this other one? And this one is Cornwall and Hudson. So basically our limitations.
I was just gonna ask if, if you could bring me up to speed on this, because you guys introduced this before I got here, so I'm a little
Right. So if you've noticed
Did you say two years ago?
Yeah.
It was two years ago, sorry?
Yeah.
So if you noticed, and hopefully less so now, there was times, there were sometimes, not just two, but three poles, there was sticking up a pole, there was a half pole, a hanging pole,
Yeah.
randomly a pole that was somehow managed to be this piece, hanging from a wire. And there was line of sight issues, some of them, they at least appeared to be physically dangerous, they're just obstructive. And we pressed pause on it initially, I don't remember what sparked, do you remember what sparked it specifically, why we, we
Well, they said, give us, give us some time, pretty much, to try to address it.
No, but why do we, I don't recall
It because it was getting really bad, because they were replacing a lot of poles
Yeah.
There was a proliferation.
And leaving like tie one, yeah.
And leaving all the old poles there.
Right, right, so then we, we, you know, put on, on, on our calendar and they, on our agenda, and they came pretty strong, I recall, saying, oh, you can't do this, and maybe you can't do this, and and we're doing it not because we just don't like them, because they're ugly, but for safety reasons. And we agreed to work with them and, and to Con Ed's credit, and tell me if I'm right or wrong, but I think we decided that we're right, Con Ed did a good job, but now Verizon hasn't accepted their responsibility because there's multiple companies on the pole.
And you had that breakdown that was like, what's white path versus
Right.
We all, we also wanted to work with them, we had the downtown
Right.
Right, it was downtown, absolutely.
Yeah.
So we saw
So we don't work with them
A lot of those
And we had all the work that we were doing
And, and to their credit, we looked at, it was another municipality, maybe Yorktown?
Yeah. Yes, Yorktown.
Yorktown, that they had success in just bringing this issue up to them and addressing it, and then they took action. So it's not really a Con Edison issue directly right now, although there are some, there's just other providers on the pole. So we need to really sort of reinvigorate and say, you gotta come down, because there, again, modest side issues, destructive, destruction, things like that, so we want to prod them to realize that, and if we have to legislate it, and maybe that it's a financial burden to them, then we'll deal with it.
So, so this list is taken from something called Injuns. So the Public Service Commission, recognizing that double poles were an issue, requires the utilities after a certain date in like twenty seventeen to take and register every double pole, so every time a utility has to take and put a new pole next to an old pole, they needed to register it on this list. And I'm thinking that this is from the pole issues, right.
Oh, that's neat.
The problem with it is, is that it has no teeth. So although, so the utilities were happily enrolling all of their double poles on this Injuns list,
Yeah.
and the deal was, is that they had to remove them within thirty days.
And the, 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 the piece of that, that a bite of it was, is that it was two hundred fifty dollars a day, and each day is a new violation.
Right, okay.
Right, this was our local law.
Yes, so you can see how that can be combined.
The problem is, is that the Public Service Commission had a thirty-day limitation, but they have no penalty if the, it slips, if the date slips. So on one of the versions that I had Lauren run of our double poles, the first version on page thirty-nine, the ticket updates, as you could see, is from September sixth of twenty eighteen.
Sure.
So they've been sitting on this list for now a year, haven't been removed, and there's no urgency because there's no penalty to any utilities.
Right.
And do we have confidence that this is up to date, that the people have been maintaining it as they've been removing their
I, I actually don't have any confidence that it's up to date. Um, the interesting thing is, is that we have been, we have been, we ourselves have compiled our own
Stuff that we don't think state databases are in all of this today.
Right.
um, list of double poles, which was actually significantly higher than what the utilities had.
Not shocking.
Yeah, not shockingly at all, we had like something like four hundred and forty-eight, they only indicated that we had three hundred.
It said two, actually.
Yeah, two hundred, so it was sort of funny, but DPW did a Herculean job of going through and literally mapping every single one of these and logging it onto an Excel sheet. And what's been holding us up is, since we've lost Maggie, our old intern down at DPW, we haven't had the
Person power there.
person power to go out and actually track them. So this is their list, this is the Public Service Commission's list, which indicates that there are three hundred and eight, and that some of them have been sitting on this list for well over a year.
And we shouldn't be forced to use our people power, time and money and energy to go, we have plenty of other things to do, so it's incumbent upon them
No. Right. Right, to do it.
to do that.
So the only limitation, the other limitation that we've got, is is that when the, when Con Ed and the other utilities came in the first time around, they commented that we were usurped by the Public Service Commission and we had no jurisdiction. Nick says that's only partially true. We have jurisdiction on our own right of way, so we don't have jurisdiction on county or state roads,
Correct. Round seventeen.
but local roads we do. And the other listing I had her do was, hopefully, was alphabetical. And if you take a look at it, I think it starts on page forty-seven. Um, so Bedford Road we can't touch, but if you look through the listing of roads,
There can't find
the overwhelming majority of these are our local roads. So we would be able to make a major comeback with local legislation.
But, but, but I also, I also think that the, the enactment of a legislation we enacted will certainly require a belly to go handle the ones that are not necessarily in our jurisdiction, because they don't want other counties and other towns and other municipalities to start enacting the same legislation that are working under that.
Right, but I also think that maybe in, in, in parallel with us passing our own legislation, is we should be asking the county to take and pass similar legislation about county roads, because there's no reason why we shouldn't have the benefit of the county behind us on this.
Right. Was the county at the table when you guys did that?
No, 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 no.
No.
No, we've never talked to them about this, but, you know, we should.
And for that matter, I think once it's someone buckwalled and Senator Harkman, and if the county gets on board, I think we'd have a lot of folks who would certainly say, oh, this is an issue.
And the interesting thing is, is that, so Con Ed was the ones who came in with their counsel, but if you take a look at the sheet, Con Ed is not at all the largest violator of this.
Right. Right.
They have a very small percentage of the double poles.
Well, they fixed a lot of them, but, but it's not just them fixing it, forget that, they just don't, it's, if it happens here and it starts to percolate to other communities,
Now, yeah.
Yes. No, 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 completely.
county and state, they have a lot to lose.
Yeah, but that, the double pole push that the county did was also related to the storm for Riley Quinn and the storm hardening exercises that they were sort of pushed by the state to do.
Yeah. Right.
I, I think some of the frustration, and now things are sort of coming back to me, I mean, we've had some bad storms
Yeah.
where Newcastle, I think, has got to a certain extent the shaft in terms of response, response from Con Edison. And we've been very eager to work with them, and I think we've been good neighbors to them, but this is sort of a lesson or a message, pardon me, that they have to be really good neighbors and do what they say they are going to do, and get rid of these double poles, respond when we have bad weather, respond when our power's out. I, you know, on a similar but different note, I was helping out a, a resident for two weeks almost, if not to the day, he's been without hot water because of one of these new meters that were installed, and they got shut down, and Con Edison gave him a hard time there to get a plumber in, and for two weeks, and finally we reached out to Senator Harkman's office and they got it resolved, but, you know, Con Edison has to do a better job of being a good neighbor, period. And it's all of them collectively, but
All of these utilities.
But it's all utilities, but Con Edison, you know, sort of the big in the room, and they need to be more responsible.
Right. Um, so there is a draft of our legislation, there were a couple of edits that Nick had noted back on June twenty-second of seventeen.
I'll do it like that again.
Yeah, you know, the definition of a dangerous or damaged pole, um, are there additional the, the board really hasn't had a chance to look at this, but maybe you want to look at it over the next week or so, I'll put it in
Yeah.
Come back on for this.
I think it's been a session.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, and let's sit down with Nick and just try to, you know, get it in final form and set it down for a public hearing, okay?
Sure.
And to be clear, when, if and when Con Edison listens, the goal here is not to punish anyone, it's just to protect the community's safe.
I mean, it's not just Con Ed.
No, no, no.
Right, it's any, both ways.
Yeah, we've got facilities for the general, yeah.
It's responsible, and, and protect the community.
Um, so, yeah, sounds pretty good. The last thing that I noticed that's in this packet, but that we didn't really talk about, was authorization to purchase these leaf bags.
Yeah, what was that? Why do we need our own leaf bags that are very, very special and have the town and Newcastle print on them, and why can't we just use the county's?
Come back to It is the county's. It's the county's, um
So we are gonna use the county's bags as opposed to the forty-gallon town and Castle bags that have
Oh, we're doing custom.
Yeah.
To throw disposable
It seems that it's
They still say that's how they castle it now.
It did not seem expensive.
It could say the town of
It's the, it's the county's, um
So we are gonna, I, I couldn't tell from this back and forth.
Well, we don't have to, I mean, it's the county's, it's the county's, we're piggybacking onto the county's contract.
It might come with, it might, the price might include it already.
Yeah, seven, two thousand or more.
Let me get leftovers with the, any profit. Will you get leftovers from the Providence Island or something, this like random one?
No, this is, the town requires the purchase forty gallon leaf bags with custom printing. The county bid awardee only offers thirty gallon bags, generic, without a required customization. So I don't understand why we need why do we need the larger size and why do we need to have a custom?
Why do the custom print?
And do we sell these?
Yes.
Yes, we sell them.
So maybe.
But the but the cost, but the cost of a chip.
I would personally want a bigger bag.
Certainly, yeah, certainly people want the bigger bags and.
But I don't know if they want.
Sure, but maybe if we sold them at a slightly cheaper price point, they would buy two thirty gallons.
They might not, though.
Yeah, but it's annoying if.
It's kind of a number of bags.
I can't judge how much ten gallons is in a bag. I mean, forty gallons do fill up pretty quickly.
Well, it's uh exactly.
At least it is a bit smaller.
Thank you, but I. Well.
Alright, I'll I'll punk out the uh the the pricing on it. Is this, do you wanna order them?
Does he already order them?
No, it was just one of the authorizations.
Um but we need to kind of get it moving in the way.
And I I I think the size should be basically based on their experience, but the imprint should be uh.
Size is important, yeah, I think size is.
Well, yes, but if we are getting significantly cheaper price by working off of the county backdrop contract as opposed to going out to bid because we need we think we need forty gallons and we think we need to have it, say, the town of Newcastle.
Peanuts.
It might be just.
How much, how many do we, how many do we uh have leftover each year?
I didn't get any of those answers. Twenty one thousand.
It's an interesting question. If we're if we're sitting on a bunch in a year, then.
I'm thinking that we're not left.
They sold out for a while.
It's also when the people pick them up. I mean, it's not a big deal, but if you have to pick up ten, thirty pound bags instead of, you know, six, forty pound bags, it's
Gallon.
creates, that gallon, right.
Oh, leaves don't weigh much.
No, but it creates extra work.
You put rocks in yours?
I just saw that, I just drove by my neighbor's property, I was just in their woods.
Whatever.
Joking.
Would you, would you turn gas leaf blow?
I love you. By the way, I got a wireless leaf blower. It's friggin' best.
Wireless, good for you.
Battery powered. It's the best. With a wire, you're such a hassle.
Let's not have another.
Wire, I should draw up the wires and stuck on everything. I use it for my patio, I don't use it for the leaf section.
Thank you.
Real hassle. It's at the pleasure.
Alright, we'll go off to the next.
No, I do it for my patio.
Yeah, one second.
No, like the dirt and stuff, debris.
Well, wait, would you choose a Twix or a hundred grand if you had your choice?
Hundred grand.
Hundred grand, really?
Let the druggies go for Twix.
For druggies?
Hope he's in a small bag.
You mean.
Hundred grand?
Why do you know that?
Jim?
How do I know?
Jim, you're on the record here, a hundred grand of Twix.
I I will ask what the deal is.
Twix, Jason?
I'm Allison.
You were talking, wasn't it?
So you would prefer us not to have?
I don't think we need the logo, I mean, I mean, what's the cost of, I mean, what's?
Logos. I I don't.
But if we're selling them and not losing money, what's the difference?
Because we could potentially, I mean, I don't I don't know, I don't know what the cost is. It's not.
I'm just curious because if I I, what 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 you sell them for, right, it's maybe, uh, let's just get those numbers, it's pretty simple. Maybe a non-issue.
It doesn't say what we sell them for.
Okay. Got it. Got it, got it. But we should also speak, we should speak on mic and see what he has to say too. I mean, we should, we don't really, you know, this is, if he's making a recommendation.
Yeah.
I mean, if we're selling them, we could sell them for a dollar a bag, it's not.
It may be a non-issue, very well.
I thought the price was fifty cents a piece.
Is that what it is? I just don't know.
Oh, well, then we would be losing money, so that.
Oh, so you have to raise it to whatever it is, seventy five or sixty?
Or I I don't know, it's on the Masterpiece schedule. I genuinely don't know.
Alright, we can resolve it next week.
Okay, no, we will do that, okay, so that's that first.
Alright, um couple poles, see, see, uh.
Is that it, the town board meeting?
That's it.
That's it, yeah.
Okay, move into town board meeting. So we get a motion to exec uh to adjourn the.
Second.
Excer- the law in favor?
I.
I have to like this, I'm late, I'm sorry.
I don't know, one of us, we all did it together.
I know, I know, pick one.
Two more.
You can pick, chill.
Alright.
Yeah. Okay, so I don't really have uh surveillance reports, uh I'm not doing two weeks in a row.
And I'm I'm in a mainstream supporting stories.
That's where I drew the line. But announcements, we have the community festival this weekend, we have the blood drive this weekend. Those would be the announcements for now.
Buy tickets to battle the bands, which is in two weeks.
And uh. Battle the bands, September twenty first.
Is that next Saturday?
Twenty first.
And what else we got there? Uh Jill, you got anything for administration?
Uh no, um uh school tax bills were mailed. If you have received them, please contact the uh tax office at two three eight four seven seven three.
Yes.
They are due, um first caps due without penalty. By September thirtieth, tax office will be open from seven AM to seven PM on September thirtieth, and we hold postdated checks.
Okay, good boy. Public comment in business.
Is there community day coming up?
There is a community day. Will be, will they donate a show of blood anywhere?
I'd be happy to, I would take that, that's always a good idea.
We have uh, we have a lot of good news to report. We have so far seventy seven booths that were signed up.
X eight.
So that means it's a good size.
How much is a normal?
Uh well, it's higher than it's been in in recent memory. I don't think anybody remembers it. Uh but seventy seven booths going around, you know, that intersection is, it's gonna be quite the day, plus you have uh the farmers market. So it's quite uh quite active. Uh we also uh the Rotary has has worked very hard to uh to make sure that things are doing their, right now volunteering on some uh some projects, uh which I'll fill the board in on at another time. Uh we do have, uh as you mentioned, the blood drive coming up. Uh folks who have not signed up, please just come, I'll fit you in. And if you if you care to call me, we'll get you a different time and I'll fit you in on time. It's been very, very good. You'd like to, you'd like to go with the fifties again, if you could. And I wanna thank everybody and we'd like to also encourage those town then board members uh to donate, who can donate. If you can't donate, please get somebody in the building, understand. We have a, we, there there is a cap on the list.
Patricia?
Uh no, I just wanted to thank you for all your hard work. Uh I did put, I did put a lot of posters up, you'll notice that are more over town.
Thank you.
Um we put up two hundred fifty posters. It's my aim to get them down uh within one to two days to set a precedent for the town, so the people, if they're gonna put up posters, that we should take them down ourselves. That's all I wanted to say.
You're always very good about that, campaign science, too.
Thank you, John.
Yeah, you are terrific at that, I.
Yeah, whatever it's, whatever it takes. Thank you, guys, and uh I will keep it, and we want to keep you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other public comment in business? I would like to announce, I I I should have announced it tomorrow already, but tomorrow we have our nine eleven memorial service, six thirty, Getney Park. Should be very nice, as always. And uh weather looks like it's cooperating, so it should be good. As well as for Saturday, whether it's gonna cooperate. Hopefully, it stays like that.
Thank you.
So alright, so now we uh we have some resolutions.
I don't see them. I don't.
They're here. I'm on a lot. Alright, I move to approve the payment of claims in the amount of two hundred forty thousand, four hundred forty dollars and seventy eight cents, listed on the summary pre-check writing report and detailed voucher detail report, each prepared on September tenth, twenty nineteen. Checks will be issued in mail to each claimant listed on Wednesday, September eleventh.
Second, whoa, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to accept the following monthly reports for August twenty nineteen, town clerk, court clerk, development department and receiver of taxes.
Second, whoa, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to authorize the canvassing and hiring for a senior office assistant for the Department of Public Works Administration Office with a starting salary of fifty six thousand, three hundred and sixty five dollars and seventeen cents.
Second, whoa, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, yeah.
Moving to Jerry.
Second.
That it?
That's it, okay.
Hi.
He did pay the pen, he has to get it right.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, everybody.
Good night.
Thank you all.
Thank you.